And welcome to the March 22nd, City of Tuolton Regular City Council Meeting. We just met previously with work session and we'll continue our business tonight. First item on the agenda tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance and the pledge we led by Counselor Sacco. I think we have some audio visual plus her saying the words. Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now next up is Counselor Brooks. Counselor Brooks, we're momentous sounds for those who've lost their lives due to COVID-19.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me. As of today in the United States, we've lost over 543, oh, sorry, 543,000 people to death of from COVID-19 and so please join me in a moment of silence for those that we've lost to COVID-19 and those that are suffering. Thank you.
Okay, we have two announcements tonight. First one being the Community Development Week proclamation. And do we have any staff report? Is this Bridget discussing what it is?
No staff report.
Right, so Bridget, you're on for this.
Okay, here we are. Proclamation declaring April 5th through 9th, 2021 as Community Development Week in the City of Tuolton. Whereas the week of April 5th through 9th, 2021 has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Organization Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program and the Home Investment Partnerships Home Program. And whereas the CDBG Program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe and sanitary housing, a suitable living environment and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people. And whereas the Home Investment Partnerships Home Program provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, affordable housing opportunities for low-income persons. Nationally, over 1 million units of affordable housing have been completed using home funds. And whereas over the program's history, our community has received a total of $1,810,617 in CDBG funds. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolton, Oregon, that the week of April 5th through 9th, 2021 is National Community Development Week. In support of these two valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of housing stock, infrastructure, public services and economic vitality of our community. The council urges Congress and the administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and nationally by the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnerships Program by supporting increased funding for both programs in fiscal year 2022. Introduced and adopted this 22nd day of March, 2021 in Tuolton, Oregon.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say too, just from working on the PAB and with the people leading the program at the county, that they just do a phenomenal job and it's a pleasure to work with that with the whole committee and leadership that's so dedicated to, to helping a lot of people that have been left behind. Thanks.
Next item under our announcements is Arbor Week presentation or proclamation. I know there's a presentation for Arbor Week. Yeah, so the PowerPoint slides that I see Rich popping in.
Yes.
A whole bunch of T-Park people showed up too. Holy crap.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Vice Chair Brandon Gill and prospective member Emma Gray to give the presentation tonight.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to share my screen. If I can find it, there is. Oh, oh, I'm cheating all the way to the end there. Alright. Hello, I am Brandon Gill, the Vice Chair for T-Park. And not only is T-Park the Committee for Parks and Recreation, we are also about bees and trees. So we are here to talk about trees today. And Arbor Week 2021, which is April 4th through 10th. We have a new prospective member, as Rich pointed out, who, you know, what makes a great committee member and a great committee partner is when you show up for the first meeting and you're told, hey, we're doing a presentation to Mayor next, Mayor Council next week. Do you want to do it? And she said, yep, I'm in. What do you need me to do? So perspective or not, she's going to present and I think she will do a great job. Emma?
Great, thanks, Brandon. Yes, I gotta love a group that puts me to work right, right out of the gate. And I never miss an opportunity to talk about how great trees are. I'm thrilled to be a new member of this group that gets to honor trees and the benefits that they give to our city. And you can see on the slide there, the purpose of Arbor Week. We recognize in Tuolton, the first full week of April is Arbor Week to celebrate the many contributions that trees make to our lives and community. And we've listed some of the ones there that we think are really important. There are public health and social benefits, including clean air, noise reduction, crime reduction, traffic calming. We experience great environmental benefits around climate change, energy conservation, water filtration, wildlife habitat. I think a lot of us are seeing hummingbird nests and different sorts of things in some of our trees. And there are economic benefits. Lots of studies have shown that trees increase the home value and attract businesses to an area. And we are very lucky in Tuolton to have all of these benefits for our beautiful tree canopy, which we hope to increase. One of the really wonderful things that I'm learning about T-Park is that we have the great privilege of celebrating Arbor Week in our city through a couple of contests that involve the public. One is our poster contest for school-aged youth. And the next slide, we're very proud to announce, or if you have not already seen, the winners of our kids' poster contest. In answering the prompt, Tuolton Trees Are, we had two amazing winners. Darcy P., representing grades K through 5, who answered that and said, trees are beautiful all year round, which we can agree on. And Cassidy W., representing grades 6 through 8, who said that trees are pretty. Again, where's the lie in that? Really great entries from our students. And I look forward to next year when I get to, to help judge, because what a fun and important job. We also do a photo contest. And so you can see the winners reflected here. First place went to Angela Bingham. This photo titled A Quiet Moment, the beautiful petal snow at Tuolton High School. The second place photo of the photo contest and the third place are here on this slide. Tuolton in Bloom by Royce Waxenfelter took this beautiful tree photo at McCaw Court. And Michelle Course, a third place winner, Browns Ferry Park squirrel. Her photo titled A Place to Call Home. So really some beautiful representations of trees in our community and we're thrilled to celebrate them for Arbor Week and all of Arbor Month. And now I'm going to throw it back to Brandon to talk about the, the storm damage, which has already been talked a little bit about tonight, but the flip side of all the wonderful canopy we enjoy. Over to you, Brandon.
Thank you. So yes, the winter storm damage of 2021. Here are some stats on the screen. T-Park would like to thank the city staff that was quick to act and remove trees from around the city and make a safe path and eventually make it into the neighborhoods. And then through the cleanup and the volunteers that were there at the drop-off points to be able to help residents drop off their trees and debris. And then also our fellow residents, right, neighbors helping neighbors, people removing trees out of walkways and just generally showing why Tuolton is a great place to live and be a member of the community. So as we move forward to the next phase, which will most likely be replacing those trees, we would encourage everybody to look at the street tree list and look at the trees there. It was recently updated. And those, those trees that go in the street tree area are put on there to reduce lifting of sidewalks and damage to other areas of the surrounding areas of the trees. Based on what zone you're at on the Tuolton website, it will tell you what trees are available. And this is the last slide. This is the 34th consecutive year that we have been a Tree City USA. So that is pretty fantastic. Unless there are questions or comments, I pass it back to a Mayor and Council to read the proclamation.
Any questions or comments for T-Park representatives at this point? Alright, so Counselor Sacco has the privilege of reading this proclamation.
And Emma, you're going to have a great time with those contests, judging those contests. I missed it so much this year, but I love the winners. Those are great winners. So we are going to declare the week of April 4th through April 10th, 2021, as Arbor Week in the City of Tuolton. Whereas Arbor Day is a celebration observed throughout the nation and the world in which individuals and groups are encouraged to plant, care for, and celebrate the many values of trees. And Arbor Day is observed in the state of Oregon during the first full week of April, which this year will be April 4th through 10th, 2021. And whereas healthy trees reduce the erosion of topsoil by wind and water, moderate the temperature, calm traffic, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and are a renewable resource, giving us paper and countless other wood products. And whereas trees beautify our community, increase property values and enhance the economic vitality of businesses in Tuolton. And thousands of trees and shrubs are planted by volunteers in Tuolton's parklands every year. And whereas 2021 marks the 34th consecutive year, the Tuolton, the City of Tuolton has been certified as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for following best practices in community forestry management. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the city, by the City Council of the City of Tuolton, Oregon, that the City of Tuolton designates the week of April 4th through 10th, 2021, as Arbor Week in the City of Tuolton. All are urged to support efforts to protect and plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. The City of Tuolton supports the Oregon Department of Forestry and the National Arbor Day Foundation in their recognition of the value of trees and forests by proclaiming April 4th through 10th, 2021, as Arbor Week in Tuolton. Introduced and adopted this 22nd day of March, 2021.
Thank you, Counselor Sacco. I just want to thank all the members of T-Park that are here tonight and the ones that are at home probably watching, watching you guys for all their service to the city. T-Park is one of our most active committees that is run by, you know, staff assists our citizens in providing input and planning and some special projects, as we spoke about earlier, Beth, to the city. And I very much appreciate T-Park, the people who step up there because they're very passionate in what they do and they are very active in the community and they love their parks. And they let everybody know about it and they're not shy about reaching out to the Mayor and Council with how they feel about certain things that are going in the city, which I appreciate and giving us their opinions. And that's the purpose of this, this and committee. So I just want to thank you all for your service and some of you've been on T-Park for quite a while. So very much appreciated. Alright, so anything else for T-Park folks? Anything else? Alright, thank you for attending tonight.
Can I just thank you for leaving Glenn in our hearts in the proclamation?
Yeah, that's a leftover for Paul Henin. That's an oldie but a goodie. Alright, well, thank you all. So moving on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the City Council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the Zoom meeting here or at the Poll Center who would like to address the Council, this would be the appropriate time. Do we have anyone at the Poll Center?
No, Mayor, there's no one at the Poll Center. I haven't been messaged by anyone in the Zoom meeting. However, if anyone does want to speak, either use the raise your hand function or pop your camera on and raise your hand.
Give folks a moment. Sometimes there's a struggle to do that on Zoom. Alright, messy, any hands? Doesn't look like it. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to consent agenda. Those items in the consent agenda are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the Council would like one of them removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of item number one, consideration for approval of the City Council Work Session and Regular Meeting Minutes of March 8th, 2021. Item number two, consideration for approval of late liquor license renewals for 2021. And finally, item number three, consideration of resolution number 5533-21, authorizing the City Manager to execute contract amendments with a Wallace Engineering for Professional Engineering and Related Services. Were any member of Council like an item removed and discussed later tonight? I see no hands up.
I move to approve the consent agenda as read. Okay.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion of the motions? I'll go through the roll. Counselor Hillier?
Aye.
Counselor Brooks?
Aye.
Counselor Pratt? Counselor Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. It is approved. Moving on to special reports, we have some very special visitors tonight. I see Troy Gagliano and Chief Executive Officer of PG, Maria Pope. Welcome both to you.
Thank you, Mr.
And I had a question for Cheryl on a Friday because I always talk to Maria or address Maria as Maria. I'm like, Maria's got to have a title. And it sounds like we really doesn't, even if she doesn't, or she doesn't like to use it. So I'll introduce you as Maria, but you are the Chief Executive Officer of PG. So very much welcome. And I turn the floor over to you.
Well, thank you for having us. We couldn't be more thrilled. And joining us also is Bill Messner, who is our Head of Wildfire and Disaster Preparedness. And let me turn things over to Troy, who will kick us off. But Mayor, thank you and thank you all for having us this evening.
Thanks, Maria. And hi, I'm Troy Gagliano. I'm your local government affairs representative for Tuolton. And members of the Council, Mayor Bubanak and staff, nice to see you all again. And thanks for having us on your busy agenda. And special thanks to Nick Westendorf. I appreciate all the logistical help getting this set up here for this evening. So thank you. So as, as Mayor said, we've got Maria joining us and as well, Bill Messner is our Director of Wildfire. Sorry, yeah, wildfire mitigation and resiliency. And Maria and Bill are going to provide a little information on a brief update of the recent ice storm. Talk about what we're doing to enhance resiliency of our energy grid. And then discuss a little bit about our overall strategy about resiliency and emergency preparedness. So with that, Bates, thank you for advancing the slides. If I can ask you to go to the next slide, number two. I'll turn it over to our President and CEO, Maria, to talk to you about, a little bit about our community involvement with Tuolton and some of our shared goals.
Great. So thank you so much, Troy. And Mayor Bubanak, thank you and thank you, Council members. I don't have to tell you all that the last 12 months have truly been historic. And just looking at those trees, truly, trees do gladden my heart. But I also echo the caution of planting those that are recommended by T-Park and for others. When you look at the devastation that struck our area at the tail end of February, it did unbelievable amount of damage and caused more than half of PG customers to lose power. And many of those customers experienced multiple outages over about a 10-day period, if not a two-week period of time. So we know that in the storms didn't hit your area, although those pictures would say otherwise. It's quite as hard as they hit Clackamas and Marion Counties. You all still had over 13,000 outages. And that's a lot of people to be without power, particularly when people are working from home, going to school from home. And just everything is that much more difficult during the pandemic. And I, I just really want to thank your community for their understanding while we work to safely restore power during these historic times. I will tell you, the storms that took place were the largest in our history and our restoration was the largest in our history by more than probably five times. And Bill will go into a little bit more of that. But we recognize how challenging this is for all of your communities. And PGE and the PGE Foundation are making donations to various community assistance organizations in Washington, Clackamas and Marion Counties to help people who are most impacted by the storm. And we've provided local organizations with basic, who serve basic needs as food, clothing. And we're really proud to donate $5,000 to the Tuolton Schoolhouse Food Campaign. So in the fall, you know, our region also experienced a number of other devastating impacts. The wildfires were the result of changing weather patterns and global warming, but also how we've managed our forests. And of course, we've all suffered from the pandemic, which has resulted in additional economic stress to customers, cities like yourselves, communities, making resiliency that much more important. We take our role really seriously as an essential service provider. And we began the pandemic period of time just about a year ago, really focused on recognizing how important our product and service is to all of you and to all of your community members, probably now more than ever in our 130-year history. We also recognize that you want us to really lead in the future. I'm hearing this louder during the pandemic than we did before, although I promise you as Oregonians, we care a lot about our environment and clearly producing clean energy, decarbonizing our energy supply is really important. Also focusing on a smart grid, an integrated grid, and one where we can use the distribution system, electric transportation and other sorts of things as storage and resiliency. And then also performing, making sure that we're meeting customers changing and quite frankly significantly higher expectations. We have committed to clean energy goals of 80% reductions in the carbon we emit by 2030 versus 2010 levels. And then we have committed to a net zero standard by 2040. And as we work on this, we will do so in partnership with all of you and knowing that keeping the lights on and that reliability is critically important as well as affordability. And Bill is going to talk a little bit more about what we're doing to our T and D infrastructure in terms of hardening, leveraging technology to strengthen our resiliency. He'll also talk about our storm recovery efforts. But if you don't mind, can we turn to the next slide? Because I think truly, if there's anything I have learned in the last year, it has been that partnerships are absolutely key. And I couldn't be more grateful for your leadership in the City of Tuolton. What you have shown all of us is just tremendous. And it was terrific during the height of the ice storms for me to be able to reach out to your City Manager, Sherri Lim-Lombos, to be able to talk to her about what was really happening in Tuolton. Many cities, I mean, you, you did very, very well. Many cities had huge issues with water treatment facilities, sewage wastewater facilities. We took the potential care, made sure that we were dealing with elder care facilities. We learned a lot during this period of time. One area where we pay a lot of attention was hospitals and they all operated really well through this period of time. But I also want to thank you for the operations that we have in your area. And I don't know if you recognize this, but we have been operating our call center in Tuolton since the 1980s. It's a core part of our operations. And then in 2013, we expanded with the Avery Line Center just down from Tuolton Park and in many of your other facilities. And we also are really excited that this fall, we will be opening an Integrated Operations Center on the corner of 124th Avenue and the Tuolton Sherwood Road. It's quite frankly, it looks large when you look at it half-built. It's a modern operations center. It's seismically stable. It will have quite a bit of security for our 24/7 operations and will really ensure that we're able to use modern technologies in an integrated fashion to ensure higher levels of reliability for all of you and all of our customers across the state. So we really are very thankful to your staff, to many people, particularly in the Public Works Building, engineering, community development who worked with us. There were many times when we had some rush requests to you. And we're very grateful that you worked with us cooperatively. It's been absolutely terrific and we're really excited in just a couple of months to walk you through the new building to show you what really keeping our lights on reliable and really leveraging the distributed energy systems. We know our grid is changing and it will allow us to integrate resources and many of your community members as men, as well as support a lot of our local first responders and others who have battery storage or generators for when we have bad weather events. So thank you so much. We really, it's a privilege to be able to participate here this evening. And with that, let me turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Maria. Yep, thank you very much. And thank you for having me here tonight to present. Can I get the next slide, please? Thank you. So I have a few slides and then I'll turn it back over to Maria for closing. But I just, for this first slide, I just really want to talk about the most recent event, which was the ice storm. And in that ice storm, there were three storms, one after another. And it was very significant. You had, as you can see there on the slide, up to an inch and a half of ice on our lines and then throughout the communities that we serve. And in particular, some of the hardest hits areas were Gladstelle, Milwaukee, Canby, Beaver Creek, Lake Oswego, Westland and Oregon City near, near this particular location. But it damaged went all the way to Salem at the southern tip of our tourist territory, all the way up to the north side of it. But over 421,000 customers have lost power. And you may have heard that we restored power to 740-some customers. The reason why it's so, so large, greater than that 420, is that several of our customers lost power multiple times. So our crews would fix something, another tree would come down and take out the line again. So that's why that number gets calculated that way. But just to give you an idea of some of the damage that our crews had in front of them to restore, we had over 400 miles of transmission lines that had to be restored and/or replaced. We had 20 substations go out. We had 12,700 wired-down events. And eventually we replaced over 900 utility poles throughout the system. And to give you a magnitude of that, we are constantly looking in our system, doing inspections. We'll replace about 3,000 poles a year. You know, in that two-week timeframe, we replaced 1,000. Some of the other things I want to-
It's about 65 trucks of power poles.
Yeah, so yeah, think about 65 trucks being delivered to us in a two-week period to get replaced. Yeah, that's a good, good comparison. So you can see the visual of that. And then in addition to that, I mean, some of the really neat things out of the event though, is that we had 17 regional utilities help us. We had contract crews coming and helping us. We ended up with, at the peak of the event, about 400 crews out there working 24/7 to get the lights back on for our customers. And I'm very- And I'm very proud of the work that they did. And we did that with, in a very quick timeframe and very well organized fashion. Clearly there's lessons learned from that event, as it was a once in a 40 year storm. But again, a lot of really neat work. Why don't we go ahead and go to the next slide? And here, I just want to talk about really about, you know, what have we learned? You know, Maria alluded to this a little bit. And, you know, from these events and these emergencies that we face, and that is including wildfires and the ice storm, is that, you know, we are continuing to develop, enhance our standards. So one of the new items that we're putting in our list of tools is cast iron poles. So these are poles that not only will help us in a wildfire situation, but clearly in an ice storm situation that we just went through. We are using smart grid technology. So we have more automation. So we can pinpoint where our troubles are and do quicker response. Another neat technology that we're pioneering right now is a technology that will detect issues that we cannot see with the human eye with our inspections, but it will tell us that there's abnormalities in the line. And so we can go proactively and fix those. And we think this really will add a lot for benefit of our customers. But right now, it still is just a pilot. And then clearly we are always looking at our supply chain. As Maria mentioned, 60 truckloads of poles coming in in a very short order. Clearly we have some of that stockpiled. But you know, we want to make sure our supply chain is always well stocked and that we have the materials we need to recover quickly for our customers. The last item on that, that second section there in that slide talks about continuing to expand our fitness program. That basically is our inspection program. And so we are enhancing our inspections, particularly in what we call wildfire risk areas. We hit that a little harder than normal. And we are looking for things that could be ignition sources, to be frank, and making sure that we're fixing those ahead of time. We are also increasing and we have doubled our vegetation management efforts. We are, we can do a lot within our right of ways and with our easements. We need partnership of those trees that come from outside those right of ways. And how do we make sure that those trees do not fall into our lines and that we can be, you know, stable in terms of being a service provider for our customers? And clearly, you know, what the pandemic has taught us anything is that our customers relying on, relying on us more than anything because they're working from home, teaching from home, and just trying to run a family at the same time. Next slide, please. And so here, I just want to do a quick pause and just, you know, we've talked about wildfires, ice storms and pandemic. But in my group, we are constantly looking at all the threats that we can think of that could, that could interrupt our service to you. And the global pandemic, we were watching that in China before it actually became a global pandemic. Our nurses on staff spotted that, were watching that, and we were already putting plans in place before that started to spread around the world. Storms, we've already talked about that. And ice storm in particular, that is something that being a part of utility in the Pacific Northwest, we deal with. Global warming is a reality. Our world is changing and we have to be aware of that and be investing in those resiliency efforts now and not waiting for the environment to actually change. And I'll talk a little bit more about wildfires in the slide coming up. And then, you know, cyber and physical security. I mean, this is just, you know, there are bad actors in the world that are trying to interrupt service, or they want to get our customer data and our customers rely on us to protect that data for them. And so we have a whole department that is dedicated to making sure that no one can get into our systems. And in fact, we test our employees with phishing emails to see if they will click on them. And if they do, then we retrain them because they are our first line of defense if you, on any type of attack that comes in. And we're doing a physical security. We invested heavily in our physical security in terms of new cameras, new access codes, better technology in terms of our badge access. And then I will talk more about Cascadia, but that is another event. And people talk about not if, but when that happens. And we have to be prepared for that. And then we are part of a regional grid. So if you look at what happened in Texas, where that is more of an island grid, we are more of a regional grid. We are, have the capabilities to bring resources or electrons in from other parts of the Pacific Northwest. And so with that, we have to also be prepared. If there is an issue in that regional grid, how do we make sure that we protect our customers and continues provide their, for their energy needs? I'll quickly talk about the, how we prepare in terms of emergency response and emergency planning exercise. We are a NIMS based company, National Incident Management System. It is what your first responders are part of as well. So we have a common language on how we have to communicate when there is a disaster that we're all responding to. We do exercises at a regional, local and national level to prepare for that. System improvements, we're doing seismic upgrades to our system from redundant systems. Maria brought up an excellent one, which is the IOC, the Integrated Operations Center. So we have that capability to respond in that Cascadia event. And we have that hub that will house our emergency operations center. But that location also has a backup, which we call our Redness Center, which is in a different part of our territory. And then strategic partnerships. We have Edison Electric Institute, Western Energy Institute. I'm also involved in an international wildfire program in which we are comparing notes, what is happening globally with wildfires, so we can expedite the learning curve and not be learning on our own. And then with all of that, we also have partnerships with entities such as yourself. And that is key to have these partnerships because we don't want to be developing relationships in a time of crisis. Next slide, please. And so this is that Cascadia I mentioned earlier on the previous slide. And what I like to point out here is really the image first. And our service territory is kind of in that reddish, well, orangish reddish color. And this to kind of give you an idea of what the state of Oregon is saying, the type of damage that will occur in our service territory. It ranges from poorly built masonry buildings having damage to those type of buildings collapsing and wood structures being knocked off their frame and underground pipes breaking. And so with all of that, that also means there's going to be a human cost as well. So there'll be several injuries as well as a result of that. But most importantly, what I like to point out about this slide is that we just went through an ice event. We also went through fire, wildfire event and power was interrupted. Maria mentioned, you know, 10 to up to two weeks that our customers' power was interrupted. In this type of event, power will be interrupted from one to three months. Police and fire stations could be out for two to four months. Water and sewer, one to 12 months. And I share this with you because I think this is what we have to do as a society is prepare for this. And we have to build our communities to be prepared as we're going to need help from the outside to make us recover or to allow us to recover. And this event will be from Seattle to the California border. If you just have the images of what Puerto Rico went through, we are going to be that at a much larger scale. I've already talked about, you know, how we prepare for that. There's training, there's planning, strong partnerships. And our, we plan for exercise, one of the examples there is GridX and then our Redness Center. And we're constantly looking at how do we seismically upgrade our own facilities to survive. Next slide, please. And this is the wildfire portion of the, what I wanted to get to tonight. And the images that you see there to me are just really telling about the damage that our state went through this last September. That is an image of our Faraday hydro system from the same spot, the top one being pre-fire, the bottom being post-fire. And you can see that there was a lot of damage that happened to Oregon. And this was the Riverside Fire. Part of that effort, when that was occurring, we exercised our first, what we call our public safety power shut off. And what that is, is we proactively turned off power in the Mount Hood corridor. As we saw those winds coming in, we have a meteorologist on staff who gave us plenty of warning about what was happening. In that moment in time, we are engaged with our communities saying that this is starting to come in. We're starting to watch for this. We're preparing for it. We're having our crews prepare for it. But we will proactively turn off power if we see all those things happening. Those things I mean by that are high winds, low humidity. We're looking at the fuel availability. And when I say fuel availability, it is the forest vegetation. And we're also partnered with our emergency and our first responders to make that decision. It will be part of our practices for this wildfire season as well. And my team is doing fire risk modeling as we speak to find out where we're going to settle on how we expand those PSPS zones in this coming year. And just a data point, for the Mount Hood corridor, we impacted about 5,000 customers that were out powered for that duration. And that same wind event, we had 100 plus thousand customers that lost power. So we are very supportive of the actions we took. And then there was a lot of damage in that Mount Hood corridor where trees were coming down and some of our assets were damaged. So it was the right move to make. But how, that is only one tool that we have, and that is the PSPS. We are looking at our design and construction standards. When we go into wildfire mode and we declare that as a season, we change the way we operate our system. So we don't have ignition sources. And we limit those. We also have our, I'd mentioned increased inspections. We have increased vegetation management in those areas. Partner with the US Forest Service and ODF in some, some locations and cities such as yourself to take out hazard trees that we think are trees are hazards to the system. And then we are working on our situational and conditional awareness. So we have put in some of our own weather stations. We have to do a lot more, but we want to know the weather, not at a macro level, but at a micro level. So we know where we want to take the proactive actions that we want to take. And all of this is about preparing and response and recovery. So again, these type of outreaches are very important to us. And then we have our communication outreach, again, an example of what we're doing here today. And I will turn this back over to Maria for closing and questions.
Great. Well, thank you. As Bill mentioned, there are many lessons that we learned both during the February ice storms as well as the fires last fall. I, you know, it's particularly humbling to recognize the impact that we've had on customers and all of you. Events of this magnitude require strong and ongoing partnerships. And in that spirit, we're working closely with many of you. And we're really, really pleased to be able to work with emergency first responders, including Police Chief Bill Steele, the TVFNR Division Chief Alan Kennedy, as well as many others. Troy, as a member of our team, will work with you to help identify any other ways you want us to collaborate and anything else we can do when it comes to resiliency. So Mayor Bubanik, thank you so much for having us, the entire council and staff. And we really appreciate your allowing us to update you on our resiliency efforts. We've made a lot of progress, but we have a lot more work to do. These are extraordinarily challenging times for us with the pandemic and everything else. And we are really grateful for being able to work closely with all of you. So thank you very much. And why don't we take some questions? And then I recognize that we just have a few minutes left on your agenda.
Question, excuse me, questions for the PGE team, Councilor Pratt.
Hi Maria. Thank you for the presentation. You know, I was one of the people that was double hit by the power outages.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it was fine, especially after we saw what happened in Texas. But it also made me think that we're kind of spoiled in a way because that was the first time I've been out of power more than a couple of hours. And I've lived here over 25 years. So we've come to expect the high level of service and having electricity all the time. But two things came up during this that I just wanted to ask about. The first question that of course got asked is, like our neighborhoods where I live, they're all underground, but that transformer that went out because of the tree on Boons Ferry with the overhead lines is what put us out of power the second time. So the question gets asked about why isn't there a move to put more underground lines in these areas? And my second question is, it has to do with your online. I know you're always working to improve things. And usually when power goes out, people could go on there and get an estimate of when the power was out. I realize this was a once in 40 year experience, but my ask would be, as soon as you have the, any idea, even if it's like, say it's the Cascadian, even if it's going to be six weeks like that, you put that up there just so people have some expectation of when they have it restored. Thank you.
No, so Councilor Pratt, thank you very much for those questions. Let me take the second one, then I'll ask Bill to address the first one. With regards to our online communications and our communications in general, these storms were tremendously challenging because as Bill noted, they came in waves. And what we expected after sort of the first four, five days of storms, depending on how you count, that Sunday was is that we would actually continue the progress with restoration. And then that Sunday night, we were hit with so much worse ice that we literally went from under 200,000 customers out to 340,000 customers. And then that grew. Because with the ice, is it, is that some of the trees, it didn't just all fall over at once. They continued falling over over time. And I think it's a, it's a, it's a real problem for us. So what we did was we, because we couldn't provide customers with good information, there were too many unknowns in the system, particularly as the weather remained bad. We couldn't fly helicopters over transmission lines and other areas. We were not, we were, we felt uncomfortable giving information. I will tell you, when we did put out information later that week, two customers, having pulled it, I got a lot of feedback from our own employees because they didn't think it was realistic or they didn't think it was accurate. And I think also with our outage map, we learned a lot with regards to how we need to better handle that. People wanted a lot of detail. But in all honesty, we don't want to be giving out a lot of detail to the public because people could be taking advantage of times when there's power out. So there's, we, I think there's, we absolutely have, we have seven very specific work streams going on right now to approve those capabilities as well as a whole bunch of others in addition to those, once we finish those things. So you're spot on. We need to do a better job with that. I would say that when things are really traumatic in the, in the electric system, where you have transmission lines, you have substations, you have multiple different areas, it's, it's hard initially to get one's handle on exactly where the problems are and which solutions will fix which areas. And part of that is because we couldn't access some of our own equipment for a couple of days because there were so many downed trees in the way. So that, it's a, it's a big lesson learned. So thank you for the feedback. And I promise you, we heard it. And we're sorry for that. Bill, do you want to talk a little bit more about undergrounding as, as well as sort of how we do restoration?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. And then maybe Maria, I'll start with is how we do restoration. And there's a slide in the appendix. If you want to bring that up, I can kind of show you that. So we can just level set there and then I'll definitely get to undergrounding. Is that possible to bring up the slide deck again? I think it helps. Just right there. So yeah, that's outstanding. So thank you for bringing that up. So this, there's a seven step process that we have. And I, and in this case, I'm really going to concentrate really on step three. But, but basically we have to make sure that we, public safety is first. So we make sure that, you know, downlines and everything, we go after that very quickly, as quick as we can. And the next thing really is, is where, you know, Texas had their issues. They couldn't even generate power. We had generation available. Where we had a lot of damage was where I mentioned that we had those 400 plus miles of transmission line down. And so we had to fix that first. Then we can get to our substations. And remember I said we had 20 substations. So once we fix our substations, then we can start working on our distribution. And in Tualatin's case, it doesn't sound like that was, you, you in particular, still had power and we lost it at that distribution level. But that's our way of going to restore power. Make sure we can get those electrons all the way to our customers and state. And then, and it's a really good question about undergrounding. And I, I think it's part of, the way I look at it, it is, it is part of an overall resiliency strategy, right? I don't think undergrounding is in particular the, the, the end all solution. And what I mean by that is that we even had undergrounding where some of the trees that fell over ripped up are undergrounding. And so we lost power in that case at times. And then repairing underground assets, it takes a lot longer than overhead assets. I mean, one is you can see overhead, you can see it where it's knocked down and we can pay, we've got to replace a pole, string the wire again. With undergrounding, sometimes we don't know where that actual break is and we've got to hunt for that. So that's one thing in particular. I just want to make sure that people know it's, it's not the end all solution. And the other, other aspect, and I believe Troy, since- And the other, other aspect, and I believe Troy sent a letter to the city manager on this, but I just want to give an indication on cost. So there was a study a few years back, but it, cost in an urban setting, it takes about a million to $5 million to underground per mile. And that cost is pushed back to our customers. And so, you know, we want to make sure our rates are available, are affordable and for our customers, and then balance all those risks and, you know, the best we can. But again, I think it is part of the strategy. We just have to be strategic about our customer dollars that we spend. And so ultimately they had the most resilient, affordable system. Maria, I don't know if there's anything you want to add.
I think that's perfect. One of the things we were doing, Councilor Pratt, is that we're partnering with developers and in particular, we have some engineers that are embedded in different city halls next to city engineers. So when you are digging up streets and laying down, let's say, a water pipe or, you know, conduit for communications, then we can come in right alongside all of you and lay down electricals at the same time. That will reduce the cost quite substantially. And we've had a number of successes by really partnering engineers in, in quote unquote, in an embedded way. So they're, you know, this would work obviously pre pandemic, but literally sitting side by side with people in the city offices as you're planning and looking at all of these things. I think it's a real win-win for everybody. I will tell you, developers love it because it's very, very helpful for them as well.
And Maria brings up a really good point. I mean, when streets are opened up, sometimes we gotta, we gotta find a place to actually put under assets underground. Sometimes those areas are very crowded already. And so it's, there's some opportunity there, but there's some, that's why the engineers get engaged.
I also want you to know that even with our challenged communications, that did not impact our speed of restoration. Our operations, sort of the machine behind all of the 400 crews that we had deployed 24/7 getting power back on. They were getting your power back on whether we were communicating it well to you or not. So please, please know that the communications did not, did not impact in any way the speed of restoration.
Other questions? Council Brooks and then Council Sacco.
Hi, thank you all for your presentation tonight. And it's really helpful and all the work during the storms. I grew up in Wisconsin, so we had ice storms often. And so this was not my first once in 40 years, but it was incredible that we had this kind of storm through this area of these areas of the country. It's just unbelievable. I had a question around, you know, when you were talking about hospital resiliency, just resiliency in general. First of all, I appreciate that being a center point. That's the word that I, has become my true north for our city as well as resiliency. And that's what I'm very interested in and invested in for power and just for people and that, and the rest. So when you were talking about the hospitals, I feel that that's great news. And you know, when I think of something like a Cascadia event and power concerns, not only for hospitals, but for homes. I'm just wondering, is there, do you guys have guidance around generators, like what, what people can do to prepare and best practices around what kind of generator would be good? And so that kind of information and my other, I had two, two more. I'm also curious around learning more about sustainability efforts by your organization and how people can learn more. I think you're net zero and 80% reduction by 2030 is really commendable and am interested in, in learning more about that. And then finally, just with the Arbor Day and being a tree city, if you're going to take away things that help with carbon sequestration, are there ways that you're doing investments for replanting in other areas?
So let me take the sustainability and the tree planting and tree management. And then I'll let Bill talk about the generators and whatnot. So first of all, we're not about not having trees. We're about having the right trees in the right places. So I really appreciate what T-Park talked about. And let me tell you, trees gladden our hearts as well. But we prefer to have trees that don't fall over in our power lines. And I, I think so do you. And so working really collaboratively with regards to tree trimming, tree removal and the rights of way. And, and, you know, working with T-Park has great lists of the kinds of trees that should be planted and where they should be planted. So we very much are in favor of that. With regards to our sustainability efforts, we have a really good roadmap and a plan that you can go on our website and take a look at that gets us to 2030. And this past year, we took really important steps in getting there. We closed our coal plant in Boardman, Oregon. And just a stone's throw, a little bit farther east, a little bit farther south, we brought online a wind, solar and battery storage facility that will replace some of that coal fire generation. We have a number of other projects working with Silive Tualton and many others on 100% green programs. As well as working with other large businesses and those continue as well. As we look forward, we, we have, so we've sort of outlined specific plans around all of those areas. I would also say that we do recognize that, that while electricity is a significant contributor to greenhouse gas emissions, it's actually our transportation sector. That's the largest sector. And so we have really moved a lot of things forward with regards to electric vehicles and how we think overall of that entire area. And, and again, this gets back to this resiliency issue and it's the heart of what will be that integrated operations center. We're able to use in many ways solar panels on your roof, let's say, or battery storage in your house, or let's say at Tuolton Valley Fire Districts, you know, their backup generation and being able to connect all of these things and use them effectively. And so I would really look forward to being able to show you that building, but more importantly, walk you through how we look at this. And we could also show you how, I don't know if Mayor, if you've seen this, but how we, we import power from California, Arizona, desert southwest. When the sun is shining down there and they have excess generation. And then we, and then we bring that in during the day. And then at nighttime, when the wind tends to blow a little bit more, and believe it or not, the fish like, like us to use the hydro at night because that's when they like to swim. So it does better for fish runs. We can export that power to California. We also get excess hydro out of, not only British Columbia, but also Alberta. So we can show you how the whole system works. And you can literally see the marketplace working by going onto a website. And you can literally see the power prices in different nodes all across the West and where they are in your area versus others. So I'd look forward to sharing all of that with you. I would say that to get to 2040, we're going to need technologies that we don't have today. And so we work with national organizations, just like Bill talked about with resiliency around research and development, because like helping out in a crisis, being good partners is sort of fundamental to being a utility. It's, it's, it's our DNA. We don't compete with other utilities. We partner with them. The same way you all are great partners to other cities across the state of Oregon and the region. So Bill, do you want to talk about generation?
Yes, absolutely. So, yeah, I got it. So e- even on our website, we have information on generators and, and we recognize that a lot of our customers have those because when power goes out, they, they have the ability to keep some of their essential functions going. And, and that is absolutely fine. So there's a lot of safety tips on there. Generator types, generator safety and some FAQ. So, and I can work with Troy to get that, you know, if we want to share that website in particular. I think one of the other things I want to caution though about personal generators is that, you know, we have a safety concern for our, our own employees. We really want to make sure that when they are used, they're, they're used properly and they're not backfeeding into the wires. And so where our, when our crews are working, that we're taking, you know, that hazard away from, we don't need that hazard introduced to the work that they already do. It's very risky. So, and they do it safely and they're well trained, but you know, we just, we don't have to introduce hazards. We don't want them introduced. So there's a lot of good information on there on how to proceed.
Thanks. Thank you both very much. I appreciate the information. I look forward to seeing the new plant. It's very exciting and I'm grateful, especially about the hospitals and, and in recovery from the storms.
Thank you.
Council Sacco.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Can you talk a little bit about how you, how you identify problem areas? Or are you able to identify areas that maybe have outages more frequently or longer than other areas and how you address those problematic areas? We have some resident concerns that we might have one of those in Tuolton. I happen to live in that area. So I hear a lot of it from my neighbors. So how that is addressed or identified?
Sure. Thank you very much for the question. And you should let us know where that is and we will double check it against our research. But we look, we literally take, we track all of the outage information we have by equipment type feeders, which then tie directly to a neighborhood like yours or a specific street. And we actually do, you know, data analytics and AI, have AI tools that will tell us where the most outages take place from a frequency standpoint, as well as from a duration standpoint. And then also we measure how long it takes us to get to that outage to fix it. So there's a variety of things. Vegetation, trees limbs and trees falling over and power lines or pulling up the roots is the number one reason of outages across our system. It counts for a little bit over one half of the outages. So for example, we have been taking up our vegetation management program over the last couple of years quite significantly and spending you know, significant amounts, millions and millions of more dollars each year trimming trees. Another thing that we do is we make sure, we inspect our system on a regular basis when people are out working there. But every single pole is expected at least every once in 10 years. And then we replace any that don't have proper thickness or wires are sagging or anything else. So for example, given the fact that this storm was so significant, we actually have crews, we haven't finished the storm restoration. We have crews who are going out right now and double checking over 200,000 power poles to make sure that the crossarms or other equipment was not damaged, even though it could be generating or transmitting power through it and distributing power through it. It's really important that if it's broken and going to fail, let's say in a month or another high wind event, that we take care of it right away. So we're looking at all of these things. I would say particularly undergrounding right now is very challenging for us. So I don't know if you live in a neighborhood that has a lot of underground. But we have seen much of that that was put in place and Bill should correct me if I'm wrong, in about the 1970s or so. It did not have, and this is a, this is not just to Portland general, but this is an issue that is faced all over the country. They did not put it in PVC pipe jacketed sort of systems. They directly buried it. And so you're seeing higher failure rates in some of that cable. And so we are spending more time, we have a preventive program digging it up. And we literally do analysis of where failures are. And we look at the, the voltage fluctuations would be a good predictor of failure. And then we identify those areas. We also overlay that with where critical facilities are. So lo and behold, an older part of our service territory is where Portland Adventist is. And that hospital that's sort of at 82nd and in that area. And so, and obviously an older part of, of our service territory. And they had disproportionate number of outages and it was that failing cable and some other things. We had some of that connected to OHSU. So we'll, we'll take a look, let's, Bill, let's follow up and take a look, but I hope that helps. It also can be that you have a lot of construction going on in your area and power gets turned off or, and it's a, not every outage is a, is a surprise outage. There are, a good portion of our outages actually are planned. And that could be, if there's, if there's a lot of construction in your area, sometimes that's a byproduct of, of, you know, you'll get a lot of outages. And I'm sorry about that. We've worked really hard during the pandemic to reduce our planned outages. And actually in 2020, they were 20% less time than they were in 2019, even though we did more work. And so it's things like blanket permits and extending work hours are really, really helpful for us and, and getting us able to really reduce the outage time for customers.
Any other questions or comments for PG?
I'll just say, I'm taking good notes. So I'll follow up.
Okay.
Get all the links and we'll be back in touch.
All right. Well, I want to thank you, Maria, Troy and Bill for coming tonight. I want to let folks know that this was planned months ago. And it just, timing is everything, right Maria? That, that, you know, that the storm occurred. But so this wasn't a reaction to the storm that they actually were planning on coming to visit us in Tuolton. And we look forward to having you again.
Well, thank you so much for having us. It is really important that as we face these unprecedented challenges, that really we will all work together and we, we, I can't tell you how important your partnership is to all of us. So thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you again. All right.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening and all.
Yes, bye bye.
So next up, we have our friends from T-Park are back with their annual report. Welcome Rich. And now you all got to come back.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much.
I see Nadia, here they come. Here's Beth.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. We have Chair Beth Ditman and Student Representative Nadia Alvarado to provide the annual report.
Well, welcome. Good to see you again.
Good to see you as well. We've spent an evening. I'll try to share my screen here in one moment. Thank you, Mayor and Council members for having us here this evening. Can everybody see that? Great. I'm rolling through. This is how it was going to work tonight. This is us. I wanted to give you a quick overview of who you're, who you're, who we're talking about when we talk about T-Park. Some members you've seen tonight. And our mission statement as a group is that we are a group of enthusiastic advocates for the park and recreation system with a focus on our stewardship and enhancement of our community. We have, over the course of this year in 2020, as we're speaking of, attended about 12 meetings collectively, had six virtual activities that we did and about 176 hours volunteered.
Um, these are our current members. We have Beth as the chair. We had Kristen as the vice chair, me, Nadia Alvarado as the student, and then Brandon, Josh, Anthony and Ann.
A little bit more about what we do as a committee, especially for those of you who may be newer, newer to council. We have regular meetings, maybe at a monthly basis. And we represent the park and recreation system and Parks and Rec Committee to council and also to our community. We attend activities and events and engage in outreach into the community for things such as the App quality or Stone Ridge Park improvements as we look to make them. That's part of the work that we do. We also serve, as Brandon mentioned earlier this evening, as the B-City Facilitation Committee and as the Tree City USA Board, which is why you heard from us earlier this evening. Something that we've added this year, thank you to the leadership of Councilwoman Stacko, Sacco and Brandon, is doing some more intentional outreach to our CIO presidents and presenting to them a bit more about what we do and things that we are hoping to do in the future. Hopefully with their support and help. And we also advocate for the park and rec system, which is really that backyard of our whole community. We do that by advocating to you and to others in our community.
Um, we hope, we continue to grow. We know that it's been a difficult time and we've adapted to virtual community engagement. We've been able to, you know, continue our meetings through meetings online. And we've gotten deeper group engagement and advocacy and we continue to be a citizen-led group.
It always does my heart proud to hear that we are one of the more active communities within the city because we are definitely a group of very excited people to work on behalf of the parks. Some of the accomplishments we've had in 2020 were the Veterans Memorial Planning Committee. Again, thanks to Councilwoman Stacko and Brandon Gill for their representation of us in that group. The Stone Ridge Park Design and Visioning on the Jergens Off Leash Area, which was done in coordination with the the Interceptor Piping Project. The Apolatie Playground and Court opening up. My, my children are just very enthusiastic users of that new playground experience. The Lafke Irrigation Project Oversight, some park asset assessments, which obviously you're very well aware of and we'll continue to hear more about, right? Within that advocacy for the park utility fee and then support and oversight and work with the Parks and Rec System and employees about an equity and inclusion plan, as well as a continued discussion, as mentioned during the work session, about how we can best acknowledge native land and people in our community.
What we can do more of, through our limitations last year due to COVID, we would need additional funds to help us implement our master plan, which we have goals to create new equitable community, create access for all citizens, create more environmentally suitable community and advance active transportation such as walking, running and biking, and enhance community gatherings because we miss hanging out all together at a park.
We miss seeing people hang out together all at a park.
Yes.
You'll note the smaller font. We started to brainstorm our list of goals for 2021 and the list became rather long and we're proud of ourselves for that. So I'll run through a bit of those with you. A lot of them fall into some of the categories that you've already heard us speak to tonight in varying other places. Obviously continuing to support the park funding process either via both, obviously the utility fee, then also potentially via a bond or levy so that we can continue toward those goals that were identified through the iterative and thorough community-based process of creating our new master plan. We also really want to increase and target improved diversity membership within our committee. So some ideas that we had for that are offering our meetings in both Spanish and English, working with you, find people to talk about ways that we can seat members as their interests arise or their availability arises, rather than when openings are available. Also invite, identifying ways that we can implement outreach to BIPOC and Latinx community members, which is a bit more of speaking to the connection of action to the connection of that land and people acknowledgement. And to continue our discussion on how we can best obviously acknowledge land and people during our meetings and also when we can have them again, programs, which we're always so excited for. We are going to continue to establish ongoing communications with the CIO, citizen involvement organizations. And we are waiting for this presentation to be formalized before we reached out to them again, so we could speak more to what we've done in this last year. Looking to collaborate with other city advisory committees such as arts and library. So it's exciting to think about that as spoken to earlier in the work session, as well as to reach out to other city commit, park committees. So for example, I have a meeting with someone from the Hillsborough Parks Committee in the next few weeks to talk about what they're doing and their work. So to see how we can cross information, just as our representative from PGE spoke about, that we work in coordination with other people in other cities. We'd also like to look at how we can invite guests and city employees from within our community to help educate us as a committee and continue to promote pollinator information and resources about trees and bees. That's where the tree and bee people.
Questions or comments?
All right. Thank you. If you could.
On chair.
Thank you. So we can see everybody again. Questions for T-Park? I think we hit you up with all the questions in work session.
I got a question.
All right.
I appreciate your, all of your volunteer time. Thank you so much for both coming in and I was looking, you guys are doing something for Earth Day. Do you want to share what's happening for Earth Day? In case people want to join you?
Rich, can you speak more to the logistics about our Earth Day plans?
If Ross is on the call, I would defer to Ross.
Hello, hello Mayor and Council. If you can hear me, this is Ross Hoover, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you. Yeah, so Earth Day certainly fits within T-Park's work, but it's actually led up by our volunteer services group. So this, this year, we will have a planting event that volunteer services works in coordination with our parks maintenance team to at Brown's Ferry Park. So we will have more to come on that very shortly. It's on our city website right now and we will host a fantastic planting event in celebration of Earth Day this year.
Thank you. Yeah. And I read you was, I thought it was removing invasive. So I think it's 11 to one on the 22nd. So it sounds like a really good event. And then I was just curious too, like where where, where you've seen growth in the Bee City, just because that's something I'm really interested in.
That's a great question, Councilor Brooks. I think that as we talk about where we would like to see growth with that, I think the first place that we talked about, at least within this year's goals, was looking to educate ourselves in ways that we could actually make that grow. If that makes sense of laying our own foundation, which is why we, you'll notice that goal within the 2021 goals that we want to invite people in from the city, talking, learning more. Ross can offer great insights, but learning more from the people who maintain our grounds and who could help us learn how to, how to create a more pollinator friendly backyard, for example, or how to support different practices within the parks and look to doing those things. So that's one of our first, first steps. I don't know if Ross wants to offer more as well.
Sure, sure. Thank you Beth and Councilor. Yeah, so pollinator friendly habitat is certainly something that our Parks and Recreation Department and in conjunction with volunteer services works on annually and primarily through the planting of native pollinator plants. And so we'll have a number of events. Unfortunately, due to COVID, the events have been smaller this past year. We, that doesn't mean we have not been doing them. We have. And, and so those areas in our parks are continuing to grow. In addition to that, also with the community psyche grant funds this year, we will be doing, much like we had our, our glass hearts hidden throughout our park system, we will have a pollinator related event in June that will, that we will be announcing on social media very shortly and hope to have great community participation in that event.
Thanks. And can I just ask one last one is with all the tree damage, I don't know how the whole Tree City thing works, but how do we manage tree loss and continuing to maintain our canopy and, and do you have any insight on that for me? That's going to be my last one. Thank you again.
I'll defer to Rich.
Thank you, Councilor. Yeah, thank you, Councilor Brooks. I'm happy to answer. So yes, there, there are many, many trees throughout our city that were damaged in the storm. Many of those in parks and those trees we plant, thousands of native plants and trees throughout our park system every year. So those will be replaced with new plants. We do have damage throughout the city to our street trees. And many of those trees, we have applications from homeowners. Street trees are actually the responsibility of homeowners to replace if they're damaged. And so we have a number of those applications that have come in and are anticipating many more. And our application process for those street tree permits, we are shifting actually this week. We will be flipping on the switch to our live online system through Tracket. And so any, any homeowner will be able to go on at any hour of the day and apply for a street tree permit. And so that typically the planting of trees is done, street trees in particular is done in the fall. And so we will have a significant lift we're anticipating this fall of replacing street trees.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Sacco.
Thank you. I just had a comment for Councilor Brooks about Bee City and every, anybody else who's interested, but Bee City does have a Facebook page and an Instagram page. And if you follow them, they post, they post information about how you can, how you can improve your, your yard, your surrounding area for bees. Also, they have webinars if you're interested in attending, so you can learn more and share that information with your, with your Facebook or Instagram community, so you can spread the word on how to be a better partner to the bees.
Right. Anything else? All right. Well, thanks again for your annual update. You guys, like I said, you guys are pretty busy year round and we do very much appreciate your efforts and your recommendations to council.
Our pleasure. Thank you. Thank you Nadia for your work tonight as well.
Thank you Nadia. All right. So next special report is our Correlate Tuolton Moving Forward quarterly report. And I see Jeff and Megan usually, so Jeff's on camera. Here you go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight we'll talk through another quarterly report for Tuolton Moving Forward. I'm going to share my screen with you. And let me know if you can see that. All right. Just a second. All right, there we go. So tonight we're going to go back in time a little bit and do a recap of where we have been, where we've come from on this, going back and looking at the beginning of the five-year bond program. Then we're going to leap into the future and take a look at what we're doing this year and and then what we're doing next year. And we'll talk a little bit about our 2021 solicitation process for neighborhood traffic safety projects. So back in 2018, which seems like 20 years ago with the, with the pandemic for the past year plus, the voters in Tuolton approved a $20 million transportation bond program that we named Tuolton Moving Forward. In September of that year, we completed the first project that was out on 115th Street, providing safe access to the school along that roadway and also slowing down traffic on that roadway, which was nice. And then in October, we gave our first annual report. In 2019, we brought in a program management team. So we'll show you how big that team is in another slide or two. Because delivering $20 million in projects is a big lift. So brought in a team to help us do that. We finished up three more projects in 2019, started a bunch more. That was a year that we took the bus tour in an actual bus, which was really fun. And cruised around and looked at our projects and everybody kind of got to see what was really going on out there. And then that October, we came back and gave another annual report. And then in 2020, we were slowed down a little bit in March last year by the pandemic, but we didn't slow down much. So we completed 10 more projects all the way through construction. And we started a whole bunch more. And one of the big ones that's, that's been going on is Garden Corner Curves. We'll talk a little bit about that tonight as well. So a lot of work really kind of accelerated in 2020 despite the pandemic. And there is that, the photo here is that 115th Avenue project. So taking a look back in time again, voter priorities in 2018. They told us loud and clear, they were interested in congestion relief, neighborhood traffic safety, and then access to schools and parks. And so that is what we've been delivering for the past few years. To do that, we do need a pretty large team. So we, we hired a firm called Murray Smith. I used to know them as Murray Smith and Associates. So they're always NSA to me, but they're, they are actually Murray Smith. And they have a team of folks helping them out. Alta Planning and Design is our owner's rep on this project. They are also delivering some of the projects, doing some of the design and helping us manage construction. Wallace is the firm that's designing or designed and is managing construction in Garden Corner Curves. And then everyone else on that list has Barney Worth is our overall communication team, along with Alta Planning and Design. We'll talk a little bit about our outreach later in the presentation. And they're kind of the folks, they're, they're the ones just leading us along and helping us do outreach so that we can keep people informed. But everybody on this team is working super hard to move things forward, keep things going. We're looking at 35 plus projects in five years. So that's a, that's a lot of work, big changes around Tuolton. And we're still moving forwards. This is one of my favorite pictures. It's got Finley up on the right, Uma on the left, and then a bunch of other people. And this team, the T3 team, we meet Tuesday mornings after council meetings. So twice a month we get together. And this is a team that really provides the overall leadership and oversight for the program. So the team includes Murray Smith and Alta Design and Planning and then, and then us from the city, as well as Uma and Finley, of course. And we just, we all get together and this is every other Tuesday or twice a month, we talk about how things are going, what adjustments we need to make, kind of planning ahead. If we have big decisions to make on the program, we talk about them there. We're trying to make the decisions there. So it's a super effective way to run a program. It's also fun. So this map is getting really, really messy. That's a good thing. So it shows all the projects that have been built to date. So 14 projects. And then it shows a scattering of all the other projects that are underway. And if you remember way back when we started, we just had a few projects on here. It's really fun to see this map just really fill out and get so messy that you can't really read it much anymore, which I kind of like. So it's going to get worse as we move into, into this summer and the next summer. So 2020 was a very big year of construction. This is a photo, I think we've shown this before, of a bunch of the construction projects that were underway. 2021 is going to be as big and 2022 is going to be even bigger. So we have a whole bunch of projects that are in the pipeline right now that are scheduled to start construction in 2022. So it'll, it'll be way busier even than this year was. So I'll walk through a couple of the projects that, that we finished this year. So Boone's Ferry High School, this was, this project was a long time coming. I think when I came to the city six years ago, this was on the radar to try and figure out how to get students across the street safely to the high school. And so we finished this project this year, created a new mid-block crossing at the high school's south entrance with pedestrian activated beacons and it can, completed a really critical piece of sidewalk on the west side to allow folks to move up and down and get to this crosswalk easy. So really cool project. We did nine more projects. I'm not going to go through every single one of them. We would all fall asleep at a certain point. So, but Orland Road, helped by Bridgeport Elementary and near 60th. Now that's another mid-block crosswalk, a graphic flashing beacons. Again, to just, it's a long stretch with not very many safe places to cross. And so this provides a really safe place for folks to cross the street there. And 90th and Sweet again provides really safe crossing on 90th from a lot of the condominiums and apartment complexes in that area to get over to Community Park. So really important crossing. Tuolton Road, 105 to 115. So that's actually right at about 112th, I believe. And that, that project again just provides another critical way to get across the street, fairly busy street. Rapid flashing beacons do a really good job of getting drivers to see pedestrians. And then 90th near Kaiser and Kaiser Permanente, that was another one. Again, just another pretty busy street. A lot of folks move back and forth between Kaiser and I would, I guess I should say moved back and forth between Kaiser and all of the food in the downtown area at lunch. And, and so once we're all back up and running, this, this will be highly used. So. So Garden Corner Curve. So this was kind of the big marquee project that we started this program with. We'd been doing planning for a really long time, I think as far back as 2007. And then finally, found a solution that worked for everybody, got this project rolling forward, included it in the bond program. So all of a sudden it was funded. And then we started construction, finished up design, 2018, 19, started construction in 2020. So this project will build a shared use path to provide bike and pedestrian connections along the S-curves there, 105th Blake and 108. And there's really never been safe bike or ped. There's really never been safe bike or ped connections through there. It will also, it's going to narrow up the lanes a bit, and it's going to, with the intention of slowing people down. We've had quite a few crashes up there at the top of the hill into that brick fence. And so mostly that's people going too fast around the corner. So we think that this project will help with that. That's one of the major goals of the project. We did close that roadway this winter. We had an opportunity to try and get a bunch of the utility work done and some of the road construction work. And so worked with the neighbors and worked with Garden Corner Nursery to make sure that we had limited impact to people, closed the road for a couple of months, allowed them to get in there, get a bunch of work done. We did a lot of work trying to keep people from zooming through the neighborhoods to get around construction. I think we were pretty successful. And so we opened it back up beginning of March and it'll stay open until about July 1st. And so then, again, working with with the car suboons at Garden Corner Nursery, just to make sure that we, when we close the road, we have the least impact we can to their business and to the neighbors. So I know what that's going to allow us to do is really get in there, replace that culvert that crosses under the road that floods occasionally and get all of this work done this coming construction season. So barring you know, swarms of locusts or something else that might stop us, we should be finished with this project this fall. So it should be a huge improvement, looking forward to. So coming soon. So I'm getting pretty excited about this. I, I think we talked about this earlier this year and we were talking about condemnation process. And we have been able to reach a deal with the Currens, Mr. and Mrs. Currens that own the property, the grass field you see there. And so we've, we've signed that, closed on the deal. So without going to condemnation, we were able to work with them and purchase the property we need to, to construct the project. We've got a little bit more right away work to do with Sandalwood Condominiums, but that's going very well. And then we should be advertising this project for construction this spring. And again, doing the project this summer. So knock on wood, it feels like we are back on track and again, barring swarms of locusts or other disasters, we should have this project also completed this year. So this is another, I love this picture just because this is just, this is normal at that intersection. There's always, it's, it's really confusing, really chaotic. A lot of cars trying to go many different directions. This doesn't show the pedestrians that are often out here trying to navigate past the cars. So once this is signalized, we're super excited that this will be a much nicer intersection for everybody, much safer for pedestrians, easier for the bus access, and much easier for folks trying to drive through this here. So. And we should be done this fall. So we've been talking about this one for a long time, Twalaton Sherwood Road at I-5. So this is one of those projects when way back in 2018 when we started, we said, we're going to have some, some projects that are not on city streets. Where we're working with our partners to move those forward. And so you can imagine the more partners you have involved in a project, the slower the project goes. Because we've all got to agree and we've all got to work together to make things happen. So this project, a portion of it is on Washington County streets and a portion of it is on ODOT facilities. And so we are working with both ODOT and Washington County. We are getting awfully close now to, I think, reaching some final decisions on what this should look like. We're going through a process right now called the design exception process with ODOT, where if we can't quite meet their standards, we write a design exception. And so that is what we're working on with them. And in this case, it's really to remove a bike lane. It's really dangerous, scary bike lane. We had a better bike route, the Twalaton River Greenway Trail to get under I-5. And so that process just takes time with ODOT. So working through that with them. Again, we're pretty excited that we're going to get there fairly soon. And this would be one that starts construction in 2022. So again, it's running through kind of what the project is. It really is intended to reduce congestion. I think it will also improve safety. The congestion in the morning is going to drop essentially two and a half minutes up to two and a half minutes. So reduce that, that rush hour time from six and a half minutes down to four. And then in the afternoon, a similar gain, about a two-minute gain, sort of dropping the time folks are waiting in traffic from eight minutes down to six. And I also think the way that we're designing this now, it's kind of evolved into the project. There's a lot of conflicting movements with folks turning through the intersection. And so I think we're working with ODOT to try and find a solution to make, really to reduce the number of conflicting movements. All right, the report card. So we've changed the format of this quite a bit. We realized that if we really tried to show all of the data that we had on here originally, it would be about six pages long and, and really hard to read. And so essentially what we're doing now with our report card is just reporting out progress, kind of showing the overall cost of the project. If it's done, that's the actual cost that we paid if it's built. And then we are showing the underway projects that are currently either in design or construction now. And then this part's pretty exciting because we are, we're kind of down to the, the next project we need to start is Twalaton Road and Teton. And then naturally it for the bigger projects. So pretty excited about that. And then of course, the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Program is ongoing and I'll talk about that very shortly. So engaging the public. So this has been a super important part of this program, all the way back to 2018, just making sure that we're talking to people, actually hearing people and adjusting our program as we go to what we hear. So pre, I guess, pre-COVID, we did things like kitchen table meetings, we had door hangers, open houses, in-person community meetings, a lot of face-to-face communication. And then clearly for last year, we've not been able to do that. But we have supplemented that and potentially replaced a lot of it with the direct mailings, email updates, online open houses, virtual neighborhood meetings, a lot of virtual surveys or online surveys where we can reach out and talk to folks. Yard signs, just getting out in the media a lot. And, and then really just making a focus on listening to what folks had to say. There will be a very cool outreach program coming up over on 65th. We have these big giant stickers. We're looking at two different locations for a mid-block crossing. And we want to hear from folks. We did a bunch of outreach to get there, figure out kind of what everybody thought about the locations. Did a little bit of engineering to see what they look like. And then we're going to go put these big giant, they're like three-foot diameter stickers on the sidewalks. And then have a place that folks can text into a poll to see which one they prefer. So that'll be pretty fun. We haven't done anything like that before. So should be exciting and fun and an interesting way to really kind of hear from folks as to what they really want. So it is spring. So the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Program, we kick this off every spring. It is really, it's intended, it's a bond-funded program intended to address the specific requests that people have in their neighborhoods from people speeding or just not a safe place to cross the street or maybe somebody coming around a corner too fast and running off the road or just those, those general complaint projects that we always get. The bond program is helping us fund those and repair those fixes. These are projects that can be implemented quickly. And we're trying to do, we're trying to do about five or six a year throughout the bond program. So. And then, you know, I think we've seen from the map now that we've kind of met this goal. We've addressed areas throughout the city. And so to suggest projects, we've got the suggest a project button, the green button, seems to do a great job of collecting information from folks. So going back to last year, we collected 243 individual projects that were submitted. And then we asked ourselves, are we hearing from everybody? So we only did six. So we've got, you know, more than 200, more than 230 projects that are still on our list to do. And so we started talking about what we would do this year. And we asked ourselves, are we really hearing from everybody? Are we putting our, you know, is our outreach for this program actually reaching everybody in the community? Is everybody comfortable reaching out to us and asking us for projects that they need in their neighborhood? And I think, I think we said, we're not, we're not really sure. So this year in 2021, we decided to focus this program. We're going to keep all 243 projects on our list. And we're going to reach out to some other communities with an emphasis on equity and diversity and try and hit some of those areas that we may not be hearing from. So to do that, Alta Design and Planning put together this really cool map. It is essentially an overlay of historically disadvantaged or vulnerable populations in Twalaton. It is based on the 2019 race in 2019 American Community Survey. And it's essentially an overlay of race and income. And so as you look at those darker purple needs are darker purple areas on the map, those are the areas where those two things converge. So the blue is kind of a filter we use because some of those areas are very industrial. And so where they don't necessarily have a lot of residential. And so, but you can see that that dark purple strip all the way through the center of town, that's kind of the the area that we're going to really focus our efforts on this year to make sure that we're asking questions in ways that people can answer and ways that people feel comfortable answering. So a little bit different focus. And the program is still open, of course, for everybody to press the green button and submit projects, project requests. I will say for anybody listening that if you submitted a project last year and it's in that list of, you know, 240 projects, you don't really need to submit it again this year, but you are welcome to. So. So again, suggest a project button, the green button. We get, people push this button all year. We get project requests or even just input on different things, whether it's a transportation project or something else. This is a super easy way for people to reach us. And so it's been really successful. So, you know, once again, if you have a project in mind, let us know. And we will be, you'll start seeing more of a concerted campaign to reach folks we may not have reached in the past later this spring. So I don't know that we have the dates on here, but essentially we're going to collect all the projects by the end of June. And the, the campaign will really start sometime in late April, early May, the actual advertising campaign to reach on and make sure we're hearing people. All right. With that, I will stop talking. Start listening. Let me see if I can unshare my screen. All right.
Thanks, Jeff. Questions or comments for Jeff? Also Pratt.
Hi Jeff, when you were talking about the I've, or I-5, 12 Sherwood, I-5, you said something about the bike paths. And I know we have that nice path line. Cabela's. So are there going to be no bike paths? I mean, right now you take your life in your own hands to do that, but just wondering what the design will be for bikes and pedestrians through that section.
So we are, we're working with ODOT closely on that. So we're doing adding to that project, a wayfinding project. So that as you're, so there's really no bike path right now between Martin Azzi and I-5. So if you're on a bike between Martin Azzi and I-5, you're probably really scary. I mean, you're probably not very safe. So we're going to have wayfinding to try and point folks down Boon's Ferry at that point to the trail and have a really clear directional route so that we can get people under I-5 safely. So it's really shifting how we're thinking. So there will not be bike lanes across the bridge. We're doing outreach with the cyclists in this, in the community. One person was very open with us about he rides a lot of miles and he's very fast. And he's like, that's, that's the road I won't ride on. He's like, I I will find any other way to get across I-5 besides going that way. So, so we think removing that bike lane is probably a really safe thing to do. And we just have to go through a process with the cops to make that happen. And then pointing everybody to the other. So.
Will you do that, like right where the east end of Fred Meyer where that light is too? Because there's a lot of pedestrian traffic there.
We will. So we just met out there last week, a few of us and wandered around and probably got a bunch of strange looks as we're standing on the side or pointing at things. And so, so we've got our traffic engineers now taking some of the things that we thought about out there to essentially try and again, find good wayfinding through Nyberg Rivers to the trail. And so really just trying to make sure that we're helping everybody find the safest way to get across I-5. And, and the Nyberg Overpass is just not it. I've ridden it twice and it is pretty terrifying. You definitely have to be ready to ride really fast. And even then, that's just making you feel safe.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm really excited about the light at Martin Azzi and Sagert because that's my little life challenge. Thank you though.
Other questions, comments for Jeff? President Grimes.
Thanks. I have a question that kind of dovetails what we were just discussing, but I know when we were doing Transportation Task Force and the TSP plan, there was an enormous amount of discussion about pedestrian traffic walking over the bridge over I-5. And a lot of different ideas came up about different ways to call attention to pedestrians for the cars on the, especially on the on and off ramps. How are we, I, I love the bike idea. Or what's the thoughts for pedestrians, especially now that so many people are walking back and forth to Fred Meyer?
That's a good question. And I don't know if I have a great answer tonight. So we're not, we're not looking at changing the crosswalks there. And so as a pedestrian, you can, I think probably the easiest, safest way is on the north side. And so kind of everything steers you to the north side. And so we're not necessarily looking at changes there. But it is, it's, you know, at the signalized intersections, it helps. And then if you're a pedestrian, you typically have the light with you. But yes, it's, it is not ideal, but at this point is not included in this project. We just have not really focused on that.
Yeah, that's, that's too bad. I especially people getting off the freeway and wanting to make, you know, right turns on red and there's just been so many near misses there. I can't even tell you. And it just seems like, especially since COVID has set in, I'm just seeing more and more and more families and families with groceries making the trip back. And I mean, I just.
So we can ask our traffic engineers if they have ideas on how we could try and make pedestrians more visible at the signalized intersections where they cross the ramps.
Yeah, even if it's just like a flashing pedestrian light when their little walk sign is on, just to get a driver's attention. So they don't just plow up, turn right, and then, oh gosh, you know.
Right. Yeah, we can check with DKAS or traffic engineers on this project and ask them what their thoughts are and see if they have ideas.
That would make me feel better because I pray every time I'm up on that exit that I don't watch some of the wish. So it, it's very scary. I mean, I shouldn't make light of it. It is very scary.
It is. Yeah.
Other questions, comments? All right. I'll just throw my last one, a little anecdotal story. Last week, driving down Sagert towards the hospital at Martin Azzi. I stopped and watched a pedestrian start crossing across Martin Azzi heading south and watched a car almost scream into him. He jumped backwards and taken not to get hit in the middle of the intersection. So yeah, we just like you, Jeff, I'm looking forward to having, you know, when I first got in city council 10 years ago, this was a discussion. So it's finally getting done.
It has been a long time coming.
Yeah. Back in that day, we're talking about a traffic circle there, but all right, anything else for Jeff? Well, thanks, Jeff, for the update. As usual, very informative and very much appreciate you and the team working so well on this and making this program an outstanding success.
Thank you very much. And thanks for the opportunity to work on it.
All right. All right. Next up, we have Chief Steele with the Twalton Police Department Annual Report. Welcome, Chief Steele.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm going to share my screen here. So I'm going to spend some time tonight walking us through our annual report. So this document, it's actually on our, our police department website. I, I will say there's a lot of text on some of these slides because it is the, the actual document. I, I will say there's a lot of text on some of these slides because it is the, the actual document that's on our website. So I'm not going to spend a ton of time talking about all of the wording that's on the slides, but I'll hit some of the key points as we kind of go through the document. But of course, first of all, I got to throw a quick little shout out to the, the women's and men's basketball programs at Oregon and Oregon State. They're doing a great job this year representing us in March Madness. But as you can see, at the end of the day, ducks and beavers should still maintain a good six foot distance in between them. This document, it does a pretty good job explaining kind of what our mission statement is in the department, our values. The photo here is of Officer Eric Herman and I'll tell you, Eric does a great job taking the photographs for our department. And he captures so many of the events throughout the city every year and he's been doing it for a number of years and he does such an outstanding job. But also just throwing out Eric last month hit his anniversary. He's been an officer with Twalton for over twenty nine years now. That in itself is quite the accomplishment, so kudos to Eric for continuing to show up every day and do such a great job taking care of our community. So as we dive into twenty twenty, it was, it was quite the year. It was a year that I don't think any of us expected. As we entered the year and it continued to throw new challenges at us every day, but. We persevered and we continued to drive forward and get through some of these issues. Our annual report always has a little message in there for me, kind of just talking about the, the year in general and, and what we experienced. And then we started to recognize, you know, this is Brandon Shire Court. It's actually in the city of Durham, as you know, we serve. Via contract, we provide, provide police services to the city of Durham. Citizens did a great job kind of stepping up and helping educate people on the importance of masks during the pandemic. And this was kind of a unique picture that Eric was able to capture. And then you remember as the pandemic started, there was a significant importance placed on protective personal equipment, PPE. We were very fortunate that we had a, a number of community members step up and make donations to the police department to make sure that we had. The equipment we needed to keep our officers safe as we persevered through the pandemic. Hanging from the mirror in the patrol cars of N ninety five mask and those were in very short supply when this all started. And again, we're very thankful for not only the citizens that stepped up, but Washington County did a great job activating an E O C. And making sure that this type of equipment was readily available to the first responders that needed it. Through the first few months of the pandemic. We also had a number of businesses kind of step up and get creative and what they could do to help our first responders and other individuals in our community. This is an example of Rose City Distilling that they transformed their equipment and started producing hand sanitizer. And donated this to a number of local police departments in the area, so we're very thankful for, for those types of efforts as well. So our Patrol Division had a very active year in twenty twenty. They responded to just under twenty four thousand calls for service. So even with the pandemic and everything else that was, was going on, they stayed very active. The twenty four thousand calls was actually a slight decrease from what we saw in two thousand and eighteen. But some unique things that stood out for that, even though we saw a reduced number of calls for service. The actual number of arrests that we made went up. And we have kind of traced that back to reasonings. During the pandemic, the Washington County Jail, the Clackamas County Jail were very limited on who they could take into custody and lodge at the jail. So what we ended up finding multiple different times is we would have contact with somebody, say they were contacted in a stolen vehicle. Normally that type of criminal activity would land you in jail. That wasn't the case during the majority of two thousand and twenty. What we were forced to do was kind of issue them a citation to appear in court later. And then often was the case, we would come into contact with that individual a short time later, maybe shoplifting at Fred Meyer or Dick's Sporting Goods. And have more contact with them. So that kind of caused our arrest numbers to go up because anytime we, we cite somebody into criminal court, that counts and it's, it's an arrest. So even though the activity decreased, the number of arrests that we made went up. Also listed on this slide is the number of times we used force. In twenty twenty, it was a decrease from two thousand and nineteen or fifty seven uses of force. So fifty seven out of those, you know, just under twenty four thousand calls for service. It means that our officers use force less than a quarter of one percent of the time they came into contact with somebody. So our actual numbers of use of force is very, very low. This year, we also spent a, a lot of time analyzing that data and making it available to the public. We have on our website also a use of force analysis that really dives a little bit deeper into this information. We want to be as open and transparent as possible, so all of that information is on our, our website as well. And the other thing I would say with the, the slide here, our patrol officers continued to be available throughout the year. We did things a little bit differently. Normally in the past, we were, we were very high on showing up in person and making personal contact with people. This year, we obviously made a lot more phone calls before we went up and started knocking on doors. So we implemented a number of different safety things to keep our officers healthy throughout the year and I could say, well, we did have. Some COVID cases in the department, none of them were as a result of what happened at work. So we did a pretty good job making sure we had a healthy workforce that was able to respond to issues that continued to come up in the community. Our Investigations Division consists of three detectives and a supervisor. They stay busy as well. There are a number of crimes that go on in our community on a yearly basis that detectives follow up on. And put those cases together and ultimately refer them over to the District Attorney's Office for, for prosecution. One thing I do want to note is not all of these incidents occur within the city of Twalton. We have great interagency relationships with all of our, our partner agencies around us. We rely on each other to, to do our jobs and there are times where if we didn't have those partnerships in place. We wouldn't be able to get the job done. We are fortunate to have the staffing levels that we do have, but it doesn't take long to overwhelm an agency. And if you happen to see the news, there was an incident in Boulder, Colorado today. Ten people were shot and killed, including a police officer. Those types of incidents, that's not something we could handle on our own. We need that, the interagency partnerships to, to be able to. To put those cases together and, and get the job done. As the pandemic started, it forced us to close our lobby. We are very proud when we can keep our lobby open Monday through Friday from eight to five. In April and May, because of the conditions, we did close our lobby. I'm happy to say on June first, we were able to open that lobby back up to citizens to come in and take care of business within the police department. Or at the municipal court, you can see we put in a number of. You know, things to, to keep people safe. Our Facilities Department did a great job in the city, getting us what we needed to get. A position where we could allow people to safely come back into the lobby Monday through Friday. Over to the left of this picture has our drug churn in. Receptacle that was unavailable for a couple of months and that had an impact in the community. We knew that that was kind of building up and I'll talk a little bit more about that in some slides near the end of the presentation. Our Records Division, you can see the smiling faces down there. They're the first group of people that you see when you come into the, the department. They continue to do a great job getting all of our, our written reports to everywhere they need to be. It's quite the distribution system that they have set up. The graph on the upper right, you can see the criminal citations that they processed and entered. That was a result of people not being able to be lodged into the jail, so it created a lot more work for, for records, but they, they got the job done. They stepped up. Our Traffic Division, in April and May, we did take our, our two officers off of the motorcycles. As we really limited our, our self-initiated activity at the height of the pandemic. And wanted to, you know, continue to focus on responding to calls and keeping, keeping our staff safe. So they, they continued to stay busy, but we did see a decrease ultimately in. In, in citations that were issued overall throughout the department. But a good, good thing that did occur is traffic was, you know, fairly reduced for a couple of months as this all started. So that led to reduced number of crashes. Unfortunately, some people did take advantage of that. If you remember some of the, the media coverage, there was a significant issue with speeding on I five and some of the other areas. Not just a speeding issue, people were traveling well over a hundred miles an hour, creating very unsafe situations. We still have our two intersections that have photo red light enforcement. We've had this program in place for a number of years since two thousand and ten. You can see if you look real close, the number of citations at both intersections were, were down. But we still continue to make a focus on ensuring that photo red light enforcement takes place. It really reduces the number of crashes and I can, I can say both of these intersections where these cameras are in place. We haven't had a significant serious physical injury crash or fatality at either one of these intersections since this program started. This is an example of creative opportunity that we were able to get into place fairly quickly. It had to do with delivering prescription drugs to at-risk people in our community. In this picture, it shows one of our motorcycle officers picking up a prescription, prescription from Walgreens. But I'll say the majority of this program was actually done by our Community Services Officer, Ken Fresser. He did the bulk of those deliveries in addition to his other duties. Ken has such a unique position where he handles so many different types of issues that come his way. Whether it's graffiti, as you can see from the, the bar graph on the, the lower right. Or the pie chart breaks down, whether it's graffiti, parking complaints, vegetation on sidewalks. You know, fences in disrepair, a lot of those livability type issues where, you know, honestly, a lot of times it's neighbors. That can't really get along and he kind of steps in and, and plays that mediator role in those situations and he does a great job of it. Ken's got some background as a school teacher and I think that helps when he's out dealing with people and, and working through those situations. And like I said, Ken does a great job for us. Our Property Evidence Section, we maintain a little over, I think, current count, it's a little over seventy thousand. Items in our evidence section that we're obviously responsible for each and every one of those. We've made a concerted effort over the last couple of years to make sure that we're getting rid of as much evidence as we can. So once a case is no longer prosecutable due to a statute of limitations or it's already been through adjudication process. And we can dispose of that evidence, we have to do that because we have limited space within the department. And the property evidence officer has been doing a great job with that the last couple of years. We take in three or four thousand items on a yearly basis and she's been doing a great job making sure we're, we've got space back there. May brought some unique events into our community that we've not faced before. The killing of George Floyd really brought our community together in a number of ways. I'm really proud of the way that the police department responded to these events. I think we were, we were specifically proactive reaching out to the. The organizers of these events, making sure that they had what they needed so that the events could take place in a safe manner. So the, the largest event that took place at the Commons at the lake and led to a march, you can see from the picture on the right. We were, we were right there leading, leading the parade and we had officers. You can see Sergeant Nate Cooper there on the left of that picture was marching along with that event. That was the big event and we also had students that marched from Twalton High School through the city to Tiger High School. Once again, we did what we could to make sure that they had a, a safer route of travel to get through our city. And, and still have a successful event. And then in the September came the wildfires. That's again something we have not really experienced. You can see the haze and the, the clouds and this is a good photo of what it looked like every day for about a week. These brought weather conditions and air quality that we've never experienced before. I, I mean, in my twenty five plus years here, but even through events like this in such extreme hazardous conditions. Our officers were still out there handling calls, doing what they needed to, to keep, to keep the community safe. And we had people that weren't making good decisions during this. This is an example of somebody that thought it would be a good idea during the height of all these fires to start lighting off bottle rockets and other fireworks. From the balcony and then kind of barricaded themselves into their apartment, so we had to evacuate some areas. Ultimately, we got it safely resolved, but it just was a good indicator, indicator that the poor decisions that some people were making, especially in a time like this. But our officers did a great job handling that situation. And we had a number of businesses that you, you all know, the pandemic took a toll on. So a number of them closed up temporarily or permanently. There was a lot of concern about businesses being broken into during this period of time. We didn't see an increase that like some of our other neighboring jurisdictions did, but our officers did a pretty good job. Patrolling the areas and making that visible presence so that people weren't taking advantage of opportunities with businesses being closed. And then our School Resource Officers, when the schools shut down in, in March, we rotated them back into patrol ranks. To make sure we had adequate staffing levels. We've, as you know, we're engaged in ongoing discussions with the, the school district about what the future of the School Resource Officer Program is going to, to look like. We're making some good headway on that. The School District Board has seen the first draft of a contract. We've got some more work to do. We have a meeting set up with the district next week to, to work through a few more. Details of what that program will, will look like, but it'll be very similar to what we've, we've done in the past. But we'll have some new outcomes that we can measure and provide to not only the council, but the, the district as well. So we're, we're still engaged in those conversations with the district. And even as our officers rotated out of the schools and back into patrol, they were still active. This is a picture of them being involved in the graduation ceremonies for the high school seniors last year. They helped deliver some diplomas to residences with the school staff. So those officers that are assigned to the schools, they develop a lot of relationships and, and. It was tough for them to see what the, the, the high school students had to, to face last year and they wanted to do their part to, to. You know, recognize those accomplishments, especially graduating from high school, that's a significant milestone. And with them being out of the schools, unfortunately, the pandemic also led to us not hosting our normal summer camps for kids. We normally have four weeks of summer camps that push a hundred and sixty to two hundred kids into those programs. We weren't able to do that last summer, but it gave us an opportunity to try something new. We took the School Resource Officers and we put them on bicycles. Normally our bicycles are only used at special events. But we put those officers on the bikes and put them out in the neighborhoods and parks. So they were a, a visible presence on a, a piece of equipment that are not normally seen on in the neighborhoods. And they were able to contact people in a different situation. We received a ton of positive feedback about this. People enjoyed seeing them pedaling through their neighborhoods and parks. And getting out and, and talking to people in a safe manner. So it was a, a positive that came out of a unfortunately negative event. And here's K nine Tony. K nine Tony is our detection canine, so he looks for drugs. He does not track people. Tony, who has been with us for about, I guess it's a little over four years now and he has turned into quite the, the asset for us. We, he is the envy of the police departments around us. He's very good at his job. And so he does a great job, you know, taking care of our community and then helping others out as well. And he's, he's just a good little dog. He's a little smaller than normal dogs like him, but he does a great job. Our training requirements continued throughout the year. We did receive kind of a reprieve from the state where they kind of waived some of the requirements for, for training in two thousand and twenty due to the pandemic. But there was a number of things that we could not continue to, to provide training to our officers on, whether it be firearms or use of force. Crisis intervention, de-escalation, all of those, those things are in such high demand and importance right now. Our city really stepped up and I think they did some great creative things to, to show people that we're kind of in this together, that we are a great community. And that as, as we come together, we can continue to, to make progress and, and ultimately at some point we'll get out of this pandemic. This was mentioned earlier, the, the great parades that took place in the holiday season, the community psyche grants. But up in the upper right-hand portion of the slide, those are some neighborhood parades that we participated in. We had a number of requests that came in, you know, kids weren't able to have birthday parties, so what was the next best thing? Have a bunch of police cars drive through the neighborhood and honk and wave at them. So, you know, we handled a number of, of those events and we were happy to do that, but. The the community psyche grant funded parades at the holiday season were just a great, great opportunity to get out in the community. And this is always nice when you show up to work and somebody's, you know, taken some time to to put a nice message. This was in front of the police department. It's kind of a surprise to us. Uh, on a Monday morning, uh, so we appreciated the support from our community to to take steps like this to. To let us know they're thinking about us. And this was mentioned earlier, so our drug tech take back event, the next one is in April. So the formal one last spring through the DEA was canceled, but what we did because we knew our lobby had been closed for a couple of months is we held a. A department uh, take back event in June. And the response was tremendous. It was one of our largest events that we'd ever had in terms of. Uh, the number of pounds that we seized and then we had our normal event in in October. And this one, the slide shows we took in over just under eight hundred pounds. Of prescription drugs and and other items. So these events continue to be very popular and we're excited to be able to be in a position where we can do another one next month. October was also domestic violence awareness month, uh, so. We did what we could to educate our community on the impacts that domestic violence has in our community. Uh, one of our patrol cars had a a purple ribbon on the the hood of it and then our our staff, we provided purple masks for them to wear. Uh, purple is the color of domestic violence month, and so we were happy to do that. In years past, we. We've worn pink for domestic, for breast cancer awareness month. Uh, this year is domestic violence and we're, we're looking forward to doing that again next year. And then the holiday season, it's our, our employees do a great job through payroll deductions of putting some money aside to help out communities. I mean, families in our community can use a little bit extra help. Uh, this year, the. Twalton Community Police Foundation stepped up and provides some funding so that we can kind of take care of an additional family. Uh, so we took care of three families this year where we went out and we bought a bunch of. Basic necessities, you know, we weren't buying video games and gift cards. We're buying, you know, pillows, blankets, sheets. Kitchen needs, food and and delivering them out and it's a, it's a great opportunity for our staff to give back to the community and it's. It's been something we've enjoyed doing the last few years. And then we also got a significant donation this year from the the foundation for uh, the replacement of four AED machines that were at the end of life. Uh, they did a fundraiser event even in a challenging year. Were able to pull that off and and get us the funds we needed to replace for those devices. We have those devices in all of our cars. And we very much appreciated the efforts they made to make that happen. And then we had this slide, there's a lot on here, I'm not going to read it obviously, uh, but it. Uh, talks about our community conversations about use of force and the three sessions that we had to bring people in. Uh, do what we could to educate them, uh, explain how we operate as a police department. Make sure that how we operate is meeting the community expectations, especially when it comes to use of force. These were very, very positive uh, events that uh, we were able to put together. Specifically with the help of Megan George and it wouldn't probably happen without uh, the mayor stepping forward and and. And getting our name out there as a. Somebody willing to take on the pledge to the Obama Foundation. Uh, so that led to a a number of great conversations. And as we put this process together, it it led to six kind of key recommendations and takeaways. I'm going to kind of touch on the each of these right now and just kind of give you a. A little bit of an update where we're at. So the first one has to do with, you know, collaborating with our 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 partners to make sure we have resources available for. For folks with mental health issues or or people that are in crisis. Uh, we do have a budget request in this year to help pay for uh, uh, mental health, social worker. That would be uh, in partnership with the city of Tiger and most likely Sherwood as well. That would be kind of a contract with Washington County to hire on a. Uh, a social worker that would ride around in the cars with the police officers and respond to the calls for service. Uh, it continues to move forward, that program that it's called the Mental Health Response Team. It's been in place for a number of years now and it's. Gained a lot of traction and is definitely doing some good work in the county. Uh, number two had to do with our policies and making sure that we had language in there that. Guided our officers to only use the the least amount of force reasonable. And we had some language in there that probably wasn't real clear, so we cleaned that language up to make sure it's crystal clear. I will say that this concept has been something that we've trained people, police officers on since, since I've been a police officer in the state of Oregon. But it was important to make sure that our policy matched that and again, it was crystal clear. Same thing with number three, uh, that was a focus on de-escalation techniques. Uh, it was briefly mentioned in our our policy manuals before this process started. It's now much more prevalent in in the policy manual. But again, this concept is nothing new to us. It's something we've been practicing for a number of years and is is, it's a basic um, tenant of law enforcement today. Number four talks about uh, training when somebody is in distress. I I will say that we are a little over halfway in providing every officer in the department forty additional hours of crisis intervention training. Uh, that has taken a little bit of a pause with the pandemic. We're hoping that that training, uh, it's, it's done through Washington County Mental Health and other partner police agencies. Uh, we, it seems we're going to be in a position to start that training back up in uh, the summer. Uh, but like I said, it's forty additional hours for every officer uh, to have that type of training. And number five, uh, cultural awareness and racial bi- racial bias training. Uh, that's, it's definitely on our radar. We just actually rolled out and everyone in the department completed uh, training on. Um, implicit bias. So we're taking steps to make sure that all of our folks are getting that level of training and it will continue to be. Uh, on our training plan for for the foreseeable future. And then number six talked about the the department coming before the council to share this type of information. So this is kind of a. A rough oversight of the the annual report. And then in future updates, we can dive. A little bit deeper into traffic stop data that I've shared in the past, uh, that we continue to collect for every incident that we're involved in. Uh, use of force data, officer misconduct. So there's a lot of uh, information that we can share uh, in the future for whatever kind of information you're looking for. This was just a summary slide of who was in the department and who was on the council for twenty twenty. And we still are engaged with our community on social media as best we can. So we're on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, YouTube. LinkedIn, Nextdoor, just about any way we can communicate with our community, we're going to do our best to do that. I'm going to stop sharing this. And see if there's anything I can clarify on all that wonderful information. It's not probably as exciting as the PG presentation, but.
All right, uh, questions, comments for Bill Chief Steel. Council Brooks.
I just want to thank you for all the work that you're doing and um. I feel very fortunate to be able to serve on the police foundation and have the conversations around. All the programming that you're doing, I understand, and I wish I could have gone, I was at the LIP meeting to the women's self-defense class. All the extra effort that's made to um. To engage with the community and then just having, you know, watched you. Even when there was concerns with community members about different um, situations and how you lead and. Um, listen and how you did that with also the community conversations. Um, I just think that that, and I also applaud. Um, the mayor for having that because I just think those conversations are just so important to. Um, allow people to be heard and feel comfortable, having conversations, have more clarity. Find places where we can learn and grow, but we're also just for all of us to be educated where we're really at and. And where we're really at is is really good news. And, you know, I just always try to remember like our community. Is a community that a lot of people would like to live in and would like that kind of safety and would like that kind of leadership in their police department. So. I just want to acknowledge that, um. And uh, and it's in those, um, I always forget the names of the, the. The heart starter things, but. But the fact that you guys go out there and. And meet that need so quickly, I mean, with health and life, that those. Pieces are just really important to understand and support. And so I'm just really proud of the work. Of the foundation and also of your work and being able to. Um, have a safe community that has a good relationship with the police department from what I can tell for the most part.
You know, I appreciate that and I, one thing I will throw out that I, we didn't capture in here is we didn't have our annual awards banquet this year. And so the last couple of weeks, we have been, you know, making sure our folks receive the recognition they deserve for events that they were involved in. The last year and the number of lives our, our police officers save, it's unbelievable. I shared with Cheryl Lynn, um, in my meeting with her last week. We had three events, Friday, Saturday, Sunday of last week where officers were doing CPR as first responders on incidents. Uh, we have one officer and I'll throw his name out, Officer Daniel Hernandez. He's been with us about five years now. He's got nine lifesaving awards for actions he's taken by responding and incidents like that. So. Our officers, I'm just the kind of guy that sits in the office. Our officers do amazing work every single day.
Well, I appreciate your leadership because that enables that and I know behind the scenes, those kinds of conversations and doing. Showing up to the police foundation, doing all that kind of stuff really makes it possible to have that equipment and be able to. Provide that leadership and the officers are amazing and I just, um. And during a pandemic doing all that, so I just, yeah, thank you very much.
Other questions or comments for Chief Steel, Council Pratt.
Um, yeah, I want to thank you just for, um, it's been a quite a challenging, well, twenty twenty and just the way, um. You handled like, um, when we were going to have protests, you handled that. You really did make sure it was de-escalated and didn't become something worse and. Um, yeah, having the SROs go through, I saw, I saw them going through the neighborhood and they were saying hi to everybody and. Um, and then just stepping up on this use of force and being transparent with the community and. Um, you know, all, and then the letters we get from people where, you know, the officers help people out. It's just great and, um. I just noticed this last year on the advisory committee. Um, we, one of our questions, we ask people like what they like about living in Twalton and, um. Kind of interesting, parks is always the number one answer. But um, this year we've been getting um, right up there with that is they love living in a safe community. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, Council Hillier?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just want to also acknowledge and ditto all the other things that have been said, but acknowledge that Chief Steel, there are so many. Other things and that you and your officers represent in the community on different community, on. You know, community coalitions and different engagements and there are too many, I'm sure, to name them all here. But just how you've um, helped build the safety nets in this community. All the way around, I think should be acknowledged for you in your position of leadership as well as as, um. Each of your officers being empowered to do that. And I did forget to say about the women's self-defense thing that. Um, and I apologize, I did not write down, um, the, um, each of the officers' names, but it is nice to know that we have a super, two superheroes. But one in particular is a female and she, it sounds like she's pretty amazing. So, thank you for all you do.
Other comments? All right, well, thanks Chief Steel, uh, as always. Very appreciative of your work and the whole department's work, both the folks who are sworn and non-sworn. You do a great service to the community, as we found out from the. Community uh, conversations, the police department is well respected here in the community. And is responsive to residents. If there is an issue, you're always there to, you know, look into it. It very rarely happens, but you you don't shy from it. You will get involved and resolve the issue. Um, I look forward to, um. See what happens with the SROs. I will look forward to the mental health professional augmenting our police department. And uh, should be interesting to see what comes out of the Oregon legislature with some more changes to police tactics and uh. Please use the force and please, please use of gas, uh, should be interesting to see what, um. Happens at the end of the legislature and see which things you're going to have to implement as a result of the legislature.
We're up for the challenge.
All right, uh, anyone else? All right, well, that wraps up the special reports section of our evening. Thanks, Chief Steel for coming. You hear most, you hear almost every time anyway, so, uh, so we move into general business. Uh, so item number one. Is consideration of ordinance number one, four, five, four dash twenty-one. Amending twelfth and comprehensive plan map ten dash one. To amend the neighborhood commercial zone CN and the medium-low density residential RML zones. For parcels located at tax map two S, one, three, five, D, tax lots four hundred, four hundred and one, five hundred and five oh one. And amending twelve and development code sections five, one dot, one, ten and five, one dot, two hundred. That being PMA twenty dash zero, zero, two and PTA two, zero, dash, zero, 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 five. Uh, I saw Steve's name here, is Steve presenting or there is?
Thank you, Mayor, Steve Cooper, Assistant Community Development Director. Um, we're here just to, um. Answer any questions that you might have about adoption of the ordinance, otherwise we'll step aside and uh, let Mr. Brady walk you through the particulars.
Right, I'll just actually, maybe Sean's going to just reminder that, remember, uh, two weeks ago, we had this discussion. And we approved the PMA and PTA, but this is a stu- uh, two-step process. That takes two meetings to do, so then I'll just hand it over to Sean now.
You said it perfectly, Mayor. I have nothing, nothing to add. I'm, I'm ready.
You taught me well. So are there any questions about the ordinance? For staff or for our legal beagle, Sean Brady? Not that he's not staff, but I should say land use planning and legal. All quiet, it's crickets, getting late. Council Pratt.
A motion that we have a first reading by title only of ordinance number fourteen fifty-four dash twenty-one.
Second.
I have a motion for first reading by title only and a second for ordinance number. One, four, five, four, dash, train one, any discussion on the motion? Actually, I gotta, let me take a step back. I don't see anybody's name here, but I would, uh, is there anyone in Zoom or in the audience? Or at the poll center who would like to, uh, speak in favor of the ordinance?
There's no one at the poll center, yeah.
All right.
So Mayor, did this, uh, that, because this is a two-step, if we, if we actually. Testament, yeah, so.
All right, no testimony.
Part of that closed public hearing process.
So strike that, I was being too eager. So let's go back to first and second motion. For second reading, I have the motion and a second, I'll go call Rawl, uh, Council Hillier.
Hi.
Council Pratt.
Hi.
Council Sacco.
Hi.
Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
I vote I also, Sean.
Thank you. Ordinance number fourteen fifty-four dash twenty-one and ordinance amending Twalton Comprehensive Plan Map ten dash one. To amend the neighborhood commercial CN and medium-low density residential RML zones for parcels located at. Tax map two S, one, three, five, D, tax lots four hundred, four oh one, five hundred and five oh one, and amending twelve development code section. Fifty-one dot, one, one, zero and fifty-one dot, two, zero, zero. PMA twenty dash, zero, 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 two and PTA twenty dash, zero, 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 five.
I'll make a motion for a second reading by title only.
I second it.
I have a motion as second for second reading by title only of ordinance number one, four, five, four. Dash twenty-one, any discussion on the motions? Council Hillier.
Hi.
Council Pratt.
Hi.
Council Sacco.
Hi.
Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
I vote I also.
Oh, sorry.
All right, ordinance number of fourteen fifty-four dash twenty-one and ordinance amending Twalton Comprehensive Plan Map ten dash one to amend the neighborhood commercial. CN and medium-low density residential RML zones for parcels located at tax map two S, one, three, five, D. For parcels located at tax map two S, one, three, five, D, tax lots four hundred, four oh one, five hundred and five oh one. And amending toilet development code section fifty-one dot, one, one, zero and fifty-one dot, two, zero, zero. PMA twenty dash, zero, 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 two and PTA twenty dash, zero, 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 five.
All right, Valerie.
I motion that we adopt ordinance number one, four, five, four, dash, twenty-one.
Second.
Have a motion as second to adopt ordinance number one, four, five, four, dash, twenty-one, a discussion. All right, Council Hillier.
Hi.
Council Pratt.
Hi.
Council Sacco.
Hi.
Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
I vote I also, it passes unanimously, thank you. All right, moving on to business, general business item number two, consideration of recommendations from the council committee. On advisory appointments, looks like we have four folks who uh. Three re-upped and new and one new folks, one new person who we saw earlier today. Anyone discussing this? Who's on the committee? Okay, Council Pratt.
I don't have the names in front of me, that's why. I know Emma, we were very excited that um. We recommend Emma for the Parks Committee.
Yeah, there's Mason's re-upping on twelfth arts. And so is Janet.
Yeah, and I, and I have to say um. You mentioned it earlier, but I think the arts and parks committee are the most enthusiastic people we have in this community, so. It was very nice to talk to all of them.
Yeah, I remember I hadn't, I haven't met Janet, but Mason and Brett were on the committee when I was. The uh, liaison to the arts committee. So they've been on there for a while.
And I'd like to add to on the arts committee, um, Janet is the new chair. After Buck has been chair for a long time and I think we'll talk about that again at another committee meeting, but I too want to just say that. It's really a pleasure to work with all of the volunteers and the arts committee um. Everyone that showed up and re uh, and uh, reapplied. Did just such a great, because we talk so much about the arts and. To hear them talk about them, themselves and why they're interested in the committee was really, I think, inspiring for all of us on. The advisory committee, so um, they're just so passionate and so well spoken and. And um, you know, it, they impressed me. Every time in all different ways, so I just um, feel very grateful to be able to serve in this way. Thanks.
All right. So I need a motion to approve, to approve the recommendations.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations from the um. Council Committee and Advisory Appointments.
I'll second that.
Right, I have a motion as second to approve the recommendations. For the council committee on advisory appointments, any discussion? Uh, Council Hillier.
Hi.
Council Pratt.
Hi.
Council Sacco.
Hi.
Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
And I vote I also, again, thank you for those four individuals for stepping up and representing our community. Uh, we had no items removed from consent. Uh, so that brings us to council communications. Anything else we want to chat about? Uh, before we go into our development commission meeting.
Can I just make one announcement for people to look at the new um. Requirements for the COVID vaccines, they're updating and there's new um. If you're, there's a lot of frontline workers that are included in this group. People with um, different age brackets, one in pre-existing condition, things like that. So. If you haven't taken a look recently, um, take a look and see if you are somebody that's eligible for a vaccine. And it's also very exciting that the Johnson and Johnson vaccines will be here next week for a single dose and. So that we keep moving forward and breaking our goals to get everyone vaccinated that's willing to as soon as possible. Thanks to everybody working on that.
All right, so I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
I have a motion as second to adjourn our city council meeting. All those in favor, just raise your hand.
Hi.
Hi, all right. Now let's change your hats. And I'll call in to order our, the twelfth and development commission meeting for March twenty-second. Uh, we have public comment now, so. Public comment is for anyone to address. The commission on any item that's on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments for about three minutes. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. There are slim pickings here in the Zoom meeting, so I'm assuming there's no one there in the poll center nor on the Zoom meeting. Next item is consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion. Unless someone on the commission would like them removed and heard separately later tonight. We have one item on the consent agenda, that being consideration of approval. The twelfth and development commission meeting minutes of February eighth, twenty twenty-one. Would anyone like that removed? Good. We'll have a motion to approve.
Motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion as second to approve the consent agenda as read. Uh, I gotta remember, you just write titles now, Commissioner Hillier.
Hi.
Commissioner Pratt.
Hi.
Commissioner Sacco.
Hi.
Commissioner Grimes.
Hi.
Commissioner Brooks.
Hi.
I vote I also. That brings us to general business. They've been waiting patiently in the background. Uh, item number one, uh, consideration of resolution number six, two, four, dash, twenty approving of a minor amendment. To Leavitton Tax Increment Plan. To add projects and update goals and objectives. I've seen uh, Ms. Howard and Ms. Taylor, Mr. Taylor waiting for quite a while, so welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members. Uh, excuse me, good evening Chair and members of the commission. I'm, I'm here tonight with our consultant Elaine Howard. She has done a wonderful job uh, helping. The city craft the following resolution and plan amendment documents, and I'm going to make this very simple. Um, this is a very minor amendment process um, as detailed in your packet. It is just. Adding two projects to the project list with some uh, goal verbiage changes and um, objective changes. One obviously is for the four hundred thousand dollar urban renewal planning, which we are currently embarked on. Uh, that Ms. Howard is also helping us with. As well as the rapid, uh, rapid crosswalk flashing beacons. Uh, if you have any questions, this is where I will turn it over to Elaine, just to kind of walk you through uh, the process. Uh, noted in your agenda packet, uh, the next steps will be, we will work with um. Ms. Howard on the substantial amendment process, which is a multi-step process. That's a little bit more complicated than this one. Uh, but we are trucking along and we'll also be coming back to the commission. For the appropriate documents of inter-agency uh, contracts, contract with the city in order to do the projects.
So Jonathan, did you?
Because they, anything may add, Elaine?
Yeah. I think just that this uh, amendment is a minor amendment, so. It just takes action of the Twalton Development Commission through the adoption of the resolution. And once you do that, um, these projects then go into your project list. So this one's easy. Um, and Jonathan described the two projects. Be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Questions for Jonathan or Elaine?
I just have one thing to say. It's just nice to see you, Jonathan. It feels like we haven't seen you for a while, so. Sorry it's so late and thank you for all your work that you're doing and thank you also, Elaine.
So we have a motion for the.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Let's move to um. Verk. Oh, sorry, consent agenda. Uh. Move to um, adopt resolution number six, two, four, dash, twenty approving minor amendments. To the tax increment plan. To add projects and update goals and objectives. I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number six, two, four, dash, twenty. Approving of a minor amendment to the Leavitton Tax Increment Plan. To add projects and update goals and objectives. Any discussion on those motions? All right, Commissioner Hillier.
Hi.
Commissioner Pratt. Didn't hear you.
Yes.
Commissioner Sacco.
Hi.
Commissioner Grimes.
Hi.
Commissioner Brooks.
Hi.
And the Chair votes I also, it's unanimous. Resolution six, two, four, dash, twenty is adopted. Uh, all right, that's it for tonight. Uh, any other closing comments for the commission? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the commission?
So moved.
All right, a motion as second to close the commission meeting of March twenty-second. All those in favor say aye by raising their hands.
Aye.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Have a good night and uh. Continue on tomorrow with more projects and more fun.